I'm going to call this meeting the order at 6:30 PM on March 27. And I have a motion to approve the agenda moved by councillor Bateman and seconded by councillor Anderson that the committee approved the March 27, 2019 committee, the whole meeting agenda as presented. All those in favor? And item three, declarations of community interest and the general nature thereof. Anyone have any declarations? And we don't have any allegations. We don't have any citizens to make comments. Staff reports, question period. Well, we can go home now. No. So now we're going to move into our in-camera session. There we go. And I have a motion moved by councillor Anderson, seconded by councillor Bateman, that council resolve itself into closed session, March 27, 2019, at 6:30 PM pursuant to the Ontario Miss Black 2001 as amended subsection 239 3.1. All those in favor? That's carried.
The March 27, 2009 closed session items 4.1 and 4.2 be brought into open session for committee of the whole consideration. Councillors Anderson and seconded by councillor Bateman. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion is carried. Those are just discussions for us. Do you want to take the meeting back? I can turn the chair back over to you. Are you sure? Very well. So we'll move on to item, what was item 4.1 in the in-camera session, which is draft strategic plan process to date and policy 8740. Really, for your information, that there is a strategic planning policy. We have stepped outside the lines just a bit for this purpose. We did that quite on purpose, knowing we needed to go down this road fairly quickly, but we will, once we've set the strategic plan, make sure that we are following our policy in terms of its update. And of course, you've seen the timeline, which Mr Castleman set out, I think, partially for his own educational purposes, but also to let us know where we were at. So item 4.2 was public forum, March 11, 2019. And what I'd like to do is open the floor to those members of council who were in attendance that afternoon and find out if there was anything of import brought from the community that we should consider in terms of making changes to the strategic plan, making additions, maybe moving timelines, anything like that. So, members of council? Councillor LeBlanc?
The only one, when I arrived, most of them had already been here with councillor Bateman. So I had Joe Banbury, the lawyer, and his big point was the swoop pool. It was too close to achieve, and Brighton doesn't need one. We can use the Bay or we can travel 15 minutes to think, put something else that we can occupy our time or get a consultant report for. That was the one point he brought up to me.
Okay. Councillor Rowley?
I don't have really anything to add. My comment would be that one or two that I spoke to thought what we were doing was very positive. Another one or two that I spoke to later, who had stopped by, found our presentation of how we had the public meeting organized was a little, little grades. Some of them didn't, weren't really comfortable with how it was expected to see a bit more.
Very well. Councillor Bateman?
I learned two things from that day. One was don't pick the first time slot. And secondly, there was 14 people when I got here, and 98% of it revolved around infrastructure. They wanted to make sure that roads, everything under the roads, really nothing else came up, other than what councillor Rowley had just commented on. They thought it would be structured a little different than just out in the lobby, but 98% of it was, what are we going to see better? This, 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 and this.
Councillor Anderson?
I only got a chance to speak to one or two. Mr Groves was one of them, and a very knowledgeable, very intelligent gentleman. But he was talking about seniors condos. Where do people, where are they going to move when they move out of Brighton on the Bay? The high ground or something like that. But he liked, speaking of high ground, he also talked about something that other councillors have spoken about is the height restrictions to build in our town. So it's not part of the strategic plan, maybe, but something like that could be put in place now. So anyone looking at or planning or thinking about planning something with perhaps a condo with four or five floors or a building with four or five floors. And, but he would, he would like to see some development lean more towards a condo style of accommodations where people could move into after being in these.
And of course, not part of a strategic plan, because that's a zoning and official plan issue. So I would hope that these folks would come out. I do hope these folks come out during our zoning updates and our official plan updates, so they can offer that advice as well.
And that's what I suggested.
Yeah, very well. Mr Castleman, you had a comment. Very well, thank you. Councillor Tadman?
I know our fire chief is just itching to tell us why we can't go higher.
It's because his ladder isn't tall enough.
But the thing is, the community does not know that.
Right. Chief Caddick, go ahead.
There's really not a problem. They build buildings today with safety systems in place. You can go four, five, six stories, whatever you want. I don't have to have an aerial ladder to fight a fire in that type of building. So the building code is very, very prescriptive on that, and they'll tell you, as long as you're going that many stories, you will have this, 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 and this. The safety systems have to be put in place, and it's done through the building code. If that's done, there's no reason you can't.
Because Toronto has aerial ladders, but they don't go up 100 stories. But their buildings do. Yeah. Mr Anderson?
So just my point there, and perhaps we should be putting something in place now with, with some sort of a number or some sort of, so builders or developers can see that we are ready, open for business on that type of development, perhaps.
And we'll see that those changes would come through, like I said, the zoning and official planning updates that were planned, that were, that we have undertaken for this year. That's, that's how we will see those changes.
Okay, good.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. I learned that you take the last time slot, because I didn't actually talk to anybody. But, well, except for showing people where they could go to, go to the meeting. Anyway, but on the, the housing, we do have something in there about, I believe, attainable housing is what we said, because that's something we've all heard and something that we definitely have to find a way to encourage. We can't make it happen, because we're not the developers, but it's certainly something we need to encourage, is semis and condos and that sort of thing, affordable, attainable housing, so.
And that is one of our strategies, so that's good. Yeah. Councillor Bateman?
Just on what councillor Anderson was talking about with the height and fire chief Caddick touched on, would that be incorporated or touched on in the updated Fire Master Plan or limitations, or does that get put in there?
Who wants to take that? Mr Castleman?
Yeah, I'm happy to take that. I think the area of focus is in our comprehensive OP and zoning bylaw. And then, as we adjust and set the game plan in that regard from a development perspective, then the departments will have to adjust accordingly.
Councillor Tadman?
And when we're talking about attainable places to rent or mostly to rent, I noticed that the other municipalities around us are opening up to the idea and passing bylaws that you can, you know, make part of your home a rental. And I think that's an excellent idea. There's a lot of people living on their own, but I don't want any company thanks.
And Mr Ty did come to us suggesting a policy would be developed, so we can anticipate the council will see that.
So I think that would be encouraged.
In short order, I think. Councillor Bateman?
The only thing I would suggest, because I believe it was councillor LeBlanc, and the mayor was there when Minister of Municipal Affairs spoke in Coburg, whenever we use the word attainable, that we use his word also, sustainable, when we're talking about affordable housing.
And, and so that introduces an interesting topic, because the one thing I have heard, both coming out of that forum on the 11th, but since then, is that we haven't included anything about sustainability or greening or enviro or anything around the climate change or in our strategic plan. Very specifically, one of the, one of the entrepreneurs intending to put a cannabis manufacturing facility in Brighton, asked me if there was anywhere to plug in a car in Brighton. And I said, I don't know, because I seriously doubt it. Certainly no public spot. I think the nearest would be the Enroute. And I'm only guessing, because I actually, it's not something I look for. I have a fully internal combustion engine in my vehicle. And of course, Quinny Mall. Quinny Mall has a massive bank of Tesla batteries packs, so. Pardon? Do they? I don't think Walmart. Well, maybe Walmart does. But, so there might be one in, one or two in Quinny West, so. Yeah. So I guess the two questions I have, we heard councillor LeBlanc had one person who didn't like the concept of an aquatics facility strategy in the municipality. Is that something we should consider yanking more? Do we keep it, or what do we do? Councillor Tadman?
I've heard, I wouldn't like to say how many, because I can't remember exactly, but nobody was in favor in my company.
Right.
And I would pull it.
Aquatics, planning for aquatics in the community. Deputy Mayor Vink?
I think there are many in favor, but there are not many in favor of having to pay for it. That's the bottom line. It's just too big of a project at this point. I mean, it's in the strategic plan for when? What year? 20?
2025?
Just to even look at it. It's not-
To plan for it.
It's, it's to plan for. It's not to actually build one.
Right.
Just like there's a bridge, an overpass in there. Can we attain it? Maybe, maybe not. But that's when we're going to discuss it, correct?
We have to, we have to have these concepts in there for, for future consideration, and I think that's what, what the bookmark is. Mr Miller, you had a comment?
Yes. When we did our King Edward Park and indoor facilities study, that was addressed, and it was put in pretty clearly in the final report, that we could not support or sustain a pool at that time or in the foreseeable future. And I think with the strategic plan, we're going to be looking to update those plans. And I think you'll probably see the same result.
But it would be good to have that result shown to us, not, not just anecdotally. Right, right. Yeah. Councillor Rowley?
Which, which would be the review that we would have of all of the master plans or recreation slash waterfront?
All of them.
And that was for 2021, I think?
Yeah.
Well, no. To review the plans was fall of 2019, but we might have to push that a little bit farther down, too. I think, it looks like we're going to have a busy summer already.
Agreed. Councillor Tadman?
Remember the report, but I have it at home. And I know that we need double, at least, the population to even consider it. So hopefully, we're not hiring a consultant to tell us the same thing, because I can bring that to council, and I'm sure Jim's got it someplace with a bunch of dust on it.
Well, it's on our website, too, under reports.
And, and just as a reminder, as Deputy Mayor Vink said, the, the strategy is out to somewhere around 2025, so.
So we won't be spending any money on this. So why are we even getting, got it in there right now? We could wait till we review in four years?
Councillor Bateman?
I just want to make sure I understand. Some of the stuff that's on the strat plan is, I hate to use the word wishlist, but it's stuff that not necessarily we're going to do, like Deputy Mayor. So, like, I don't believe that we have enough people that could pay for it, and like Mr Miller said, now, but I don't know if we have to yank it, just because now doesn't fit. It doesn't mean if we leave it in there that we're telling the citizens we're going to do it, but if you take everything out that you might want in 10 years, I don't know if I want to show that we have a lack of vision of what might happen in 10 or 15 years. We just have to make sure that we tell them that by leaving, if we leave it in, that we're not definitely doing it. It's just a nice-
Planning for the future.
If we can do it sometime in the future. If it gets to 2024 and we can't do it, then you adjust your strat plan and move the date out farther, but you communicate that you didn't give up on it. It's just a, a nice, if we can at some point.
Mr Castleman?
I'm going to hit you with a couple numbers to get you pondering here a little bit. We have a population of 12,000 now, plus or minus. We've been enjoying approximately 8% growth or so. Do a blink and say, what happens to our population in 15 years if we stay with an 8% growth? That's pretty significant. And the other, the other comment that I'll make is that we have a number of different initiatives that are one to five years old, but we have some in '28. So is this a five-year plan or really a 10-year strategic plan? I, from my read, it's really a 10-year strategic plan. And stuff changes, priority changes. And as we go forward over the next few years, we're going to adjust those dates, because certain grants may become available for whatever initiative that we may want to get on with. So we, excuse me, the items are going to move, they're going to shift a little here a little bit. So, you know, Jim, you talked, you talked about our population now, and I would agree that we can't support a pool right now. But maybe when we're 18,000 or 23,000, which may not be that too far down the road, you know, we blink and go 20 years. Holy jeez, we could be, where could we be from a population standpoint if we continue on with the 8% growth?
Well, plus we're aging facilities right now, right? But to King Edward Park, we have to get a plan to replace them, you know, and add some more infrastructure with it.
And, and the, the one comment I heard was, I can't believe you'd be looking at replacing the ice before you put a pool in. That was, that was from someone who was a 65-plus-er. So there, I mean, I know why we would do that, and it makes good planning sense, but there are certainly a segment of our community who would be willing to pay the dollars for, for aquatics in this community. Councillor Anderson?
I'm glad Bob mentioned about the population explosion that can, probably will happen. But we don't, we haven't even discussed, like, we can't do the planning tonight for this pool anyhow. And we don't even know who's going to run it. Maybe it'll be the Y. Maybe it'll be another outside interest. We may have to be partners with somebody. We may have to build it, but we may not have to run it. So there's all kinds of things that can happen in 20 years. And I'd like to take it off the slate, because there are a number of people that have interest in, in moving ahead with it somewhere in the community. And you look around at other communities, the prosperous ones seem to have them. And I foresee us being a pretty prosperous community in the, in the future as well. If you look at the, I don't know, our, our community is, is building nicely, and I think we need to tweak it. Like you said, we need to get back, change the track a little bit to where it's going. And I, and I know the mayor's big on this, too. A little more commercial development, a little bit more. And we should be preserving a little bit, looking at where that's going to be or where it can be, because it's getting gobbled up pretty quick, and we may not have any opportunities for, to put anything anywhere except more houses.
That's right. Councillor Rowley?
Thank you. I would like to agree with the gentlemen across the floor, as far as what Mr Bateman said, to maybe not take it out, just to let the community know that we do have a vision for the future. But I also agree that it's probably a 10-year. We have April '22 in, on our list here, and I think that's way too soon, but I'm quite agreeable to leaving it in, but maybe pushing it down the road to '28.
So we did have it to '28, and then when it came back, it came back at '22. So that was the only thing that people saw, it dropped five years.
That was a little aggressive, yeah.
Councillor Bateman?
Just to touch on the, the population stuff, I have no issues leaving it in there, as long as we haven't pushed it out far enough, because right now, we don't have the population, I don't believe, because I've researched a couple of the other towns, and the town based roughly the same size as ours, after you sell memberships, which I don't know we could achieve that same level, and if we did, they still had a $550,000 operating cost. But you can't base it on, we keep saying population, you can't base an aquatics on population. You have to base it on ratepayers. And if you look at our demographics, we're not a densely populated, just urban area. We're spread out in rural and urban. So then you have to take that ratepayers and then take a certain fraction off that are going to be closer to the two aquatic centers in Quinty West, because regardless of what we charge, they're still closer to the Quinty West base pool and the other pool. I think we'll get there at some point. That's why I'd like to leave it in there as a vision, because if you don't, it shows a lack of vision. But we want to be realistic with the timeline and not mislead the public as well.
Councillor Tadman?
I definitely agree that it should be pushed way, you know, it's, it's unrealistic to even think of the date that we've got. But I think that in the meantime, there used to be, when my kids were going to school, for a long time, the Lions Club provided a bus for the kids to go into Trenton, and that was at the high school at the time. And then it continued after that. And then, obviously, the Lions Club probably took on another initiative or whatever. But I still think that every kid should learn to swim, and every kid should learn to skate. We're Canadians. And not so much with the swimming, because you can swim anywhere. But I think with the transit moving forward each year, that much better. I know that one day a week, for sure, the seniors that want to use a pool can go to community care and go, be taken in and brought back at lunchtime. I know working, I'm, I'm supposed to hear something really great on Friday. I was told from Quinny Access, some funding that's going to help Brighton. So who knows what that is, because they couldn't tell me ahead of time. But expand that and maybe encourage some group to sponsor a bus, because we, the taxpayers don't have to do everything. And organizations are so good at taking the lead in that. I think we need to, for the time being, encourage a group, talk to different groups, and say, would you be interested in sponsoring a bus to take the public school kids? Because I know there'd be a lot of parents that would like to do that. But our Candice over there has got her hand up, so I'll let her talk.
Madam Clerk?
I know that the Coburg Y, who has their after-school, before and after-school programs at Northumberland Hills, at Spring Valley, they offer summer programs in the schools, and they have a bus that comes and picks up the kids and takes them to Coburg to go swimming. So it is able to be done. You just have to reach out, and maybe they could do the same thing at the Brighton Y for the kids in the summertime.
And swimming is part of the grade three curriculum, maybe the grade three and grade nine curriculum, but certainly the grade three curriculum, I know. And the, the boards paid to shuttle the kids to the Trenton Y from Brighton for, for that purpose. So. So aquatics, what's the date?
28.
28?
28.
Did you get that? 28. And the other concept that I threw out was some sort of greening initiative or some strategy about climate change, et cetera. Mr LeBlanc?
Well, I've been trying to learn about our town councils, so I've been attending quite a few of them.
Oh.
And so I attended the one in Belleville. And lo and behold, when they came to greening and stuff, and with their developments, they found out that they got their houses too close. And their infrastructure, their pipes, their gas lines, their water lines, their sewer lines are all on one side. So now they have to go back, because when they got a, if they got a problem, they got to dig up a tree, because nobody did locate, and the plant, all the trees are being planted. So now they've had to bring something in their subdivisions, that before they plant a tree, they got to do the locate, because they don't put them all over the town infrastructure. And it was a whole meeting just on that. I was, I was shocked. It was about greening. And it's something that I thought that we should look at. If we're going to be planting trees, we do stuff, and our houses are getting closer together, we don't want trees planted over our, our infrastructure, because now it's a huge problem for them, because they got to go rip out the trees, and now they're fighting with the orders. They want to put the same tree back and do something. But this has to do with greening, I know. It's totally different, but we need more green space here. We got some, and we'll get more.
Mr Castleman?
If there's a desire to insert greening or climate change or being environmentally responsible within the strategies or the values in the strat plan, I'll take a shot at putting something together, and as I put the next draft for your consideration. I'm just going to send it to you. I'll put together a draft strategy that talks about being environmentally conscious. Just-
Is that okay with everyone?
Broad statements.
Okay. All right. Okay, so that's, go ahead.
Through you, Mayor, to whoever wants to respond, but it's probably to the CAO. I'm not talking about greenfields. I'm going to talk about brownfields. And we've got a huge, huge one that we know, I'm sure the new councillors don't know all the details, but the O'Kooli building and all that property sitting right in prime areas of Brighton. But we also have the corner of, I dare bring this up, because I know some are going to get hot about this, but the whole corner of Prince Edward Street and Young Street, I mean, it's, it's an eyesore. Let's do something about it. I think we, we need that in our strategic plan.
It is. It's something about encouraging development of that lot. Was originally, we threw it out there as, I think the original strategy was to acquire it, and council decided that was a bit too aggressive. Go ahead.
So I, I saw that comment and strategy with interest. And I can say that there's some straightforward incentive programs to deal with brownfield problems. I've had a tremendous amount of experience dealing with brownfields. And the strategy is you put the right incentives in place through a community improvement plan, and you entice development on those sites, and you assist them in cleaning up, going from a brownfield to a greenfield by tax abatement over a certain number of years, and you'll get development eventually. So, you know, I've had some chats with Daryl and said, okay, let's get going with the CIP, and bring that forward before you, and we'll try and promote that, those two sites, and get something going. So, happy to do that.
Councillor Tadman?
There's also some other smaller pieces that I think are eyesores, and we should combine them all. I'm thinking of the, the one at Spring Valley for one.
Let's, let's not name specific lots. We don't want to get ourselves in a libelous situation. But we know where you're talking about. I, I know where you're talking about anyway, and we can discuss it.
Everybody in Brighton knows where I'm talking about, so I'm not too worried about saying it.
Property, property owner might not want to hear about it. But we know, we know, but we know what, exactly what you're talking about, and we know that there are brownfields available.
You have to identify the properties.
We can do that without speaking into a microphone. Councillor LeBlanc?
On the one that we're talking about by the railroad tracks, I tried to purchase that one. I tried to purchase that one through the town, not this, not the last council, the council before.
Municipality.
The municipality before.
Square jar.
We went through with the municipality lawyer, went through Miller and Thompson, had the Ministry of Environment. We had several meetings. And I know what it takes to clean it up, what to do, who's going to develop it. And had the developers to build the apartment buildings, but then there was two other developers in town that decided that they wanted it. And there was another industry that wanted to put a track on it. So I just said, I'll back away. And I still have all the documents that are all sent to Mr Watson, because he asked me. I sent it all to him. Then you, the last, the last council brought, and then the guy from the Ministry of Environment that put a price tag of 10 million on it. I called him up, and I said, why did you do that? He says, it sounded like a good number to come out of my head. I said, well, it's only going to cost a million bucks. It's easily cleaned up. It's only TCE, it's already done. But what happened, when we did the first drilling, the second driller went through the aquifer, and he allowed the TCE to be released, because he didn't case his wells in right. He didn't follow the rules. That's where you are now. So it can still be taken. There's individuals looking at it, the same as there's individuals from Barry that have just come and did a complete engineering study of Rosies and that whole apartment buildings, plus the two houses, plus that lot, plus the pharmacy.
Okay, again, let's not name specific-
Okay.
-properties or, or businesses in the community, please.
It's, it's there, like, and I agree with the CEO. I've done brownfields for a lot of developers. Very easily done. You get the tax credit, you build. I don't know what our tax bill is that we're owed on that property, but it would surpass the million dollars it takes to clean it up. I bet you we're owed probably $2 million. Are we close? No? A million?
I'm sure, I'm sure Mrs Widdifield would-
I'm sure, I'm sure Mrs. Widdifield would be happy to tell you what's owing on that property.
Yeah.
In an email after this meeting sometime. Thank you. Yeah. Councillor Rowley.
Um, I would like to go back to the, uh, Community Improvement Plan, uh, because we don't have one here and that would also fall under act dev or planning or something like that. So, um, I don't know, it's certainly not a strategy, but I'm certainly in favor of keeping that on top of mind for that department at some point, um, because I think there are lots of incentives if we have a plan like that in place.
Councillor Bateman.
I'm not going to mention specific spots, but, but, to me, we've got brownfields, we've got vacant lots which are brownfields and we got brownfields that are, would be classified as abandoned. And I don't need any names specific because I already emailed the mayor and Alan. We have three abandoned in Brighton that currently TSSA are within their jurisdiction that they can force them to clean it up. So I'd like to see at some point where we force their hand. We don't take any liability in it. They've gone beyond the leg, legislation the TSSA governs or we have it within our power to at least get them from abandoned to at least a cleaned up vacant lot. Because it's an environmental issue right now.
And I, I did, I did see that you communicated that with the bylaw enforcement officer, so we're hoping that, uh, something comes of that. Were you, you were copied on that email, I think. All right, anything else? Councillor Tadman?
Just came into my head now and it was brought up two councils ago probably, but there is a company in town that feels that they could expand and hire a lot more people if there was a side rail. And I think probably you were involved in that, weren't you? Did you hear about that? Because you don't want me to mention names, so, but you could pretty well guess.
Yeah.
So I think we should at least look into, you know, we can't do it ourselves, but inquire how, how we could even help to make that happen. So I don't know whether that's a strategic plan or just something that, uh, when the CAO is, is at a conference or something and, and sees what other municipalities have done in that area, but.
Mr. Mayor. May, may be a matter of introducing the CAO to the, um, principal of that organization.
Well, you know who I mean.
I do.
Thank you.
Yeah. Councillor Anderson.
Maybe that'd be an opportunity time to bring Mr. King in on that meeting with the CAO and.
Quite confident Mr. King's aware of the.
Well, that's what I mean.
He very much knows of it. So. He's already been.
Yeah.
Well, then that's where it should be then.
Exactly right. Councillor LeBlanc?
I know Mr. King knows about that. So do I.
You had your light on, I wondered if you had a question. No, you're good, okay. Anything else?
Nope.
You're good? So we are moving on, we are moving on now.
Ms. Widdifield, is that in the budget?
It is not. Does, does staff need any motion for direction? You have your direction in terms of, um, fixing up what we've talked about tonight and bringing forward then the next draft, which you'll circulate to members of council. And I think the intent would be, um, for Mr. Castleman to offer his suggestions around sustainability or environmentally friendliness and, and, um, uh, then circulate it to council. Um, if there are no, I think if there are no glaring or obvious. We did go green, you're right. Well done, councillor Anderson. Um, then we'll bring it to, for council's consideration, um, a bylaw at the April 15th meeting is what, what I would think, yeah. I have a motion moved by councillor Rowley, seconded by councillor LeBlanc, that the March 27th, 2019 Committee of the Whole Strategic Planning Meeting adjourned at 8:02 PM. Is there any discussion?
No.
All in favor? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion is carried.